I'm going to open this special meeting of the redistricting, of the council for a redistricting work session. And I'm going to ask to amend the agenda to add an executive session for 10 minutes for pending litigation. We will have legal counsel with us. This is allowed by RCW 4231-1001I. And we will be returning to the, this meeting at 11, or excuse me, at 10:52. All right, that's 11 minutes, but it gives us a minute to go to our executive session. Okay, see you on the other side.
Chair, that's, that's actually 20 minutes, I believe.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, it is. I apologize. Forty, forty-two, let's make it forty-three now, since it just, the clock just turned. Thank you. See you on the other side, thanks.
Hello, executive session has been extended for five more minutes, so the council will be back at 10:49. Hello, the council's extending executive session for five more minutes and will be back at 10:54. Thank you.
Back from executive session. And so we will go ahead and begin our work session on the redistricting committee. And I would entertain any thoughts as we begin. We have three maps, I think we, do we have our people we were asking to help? I think so, yeah. On with us, okay. So, I would like to just open it up for the council. Are there maps that you would like to view again? There was an A2 map, a B2 map, and a C map that came forward. The C map was what Paul Newman created for the committee at the onset, I guess, or at one point, at any rate, which seemed to be pretty evenly divided throughout the precincts, et cetera, not, not dividing precincts, and also the districts having nearly the same population. And, and then A2 was a map that was put forward and received two votes. Map B was a map that was put forward by the committee and received three votes. In order for a map to be accepted by the redistricting committee, I understand, needed four votes in order to pass. And is there something that you'd like to say, Ms. Olson? Since you're shaking your-
Yes, I would, I would, actually, because I think the charter is really clear about how many maps should be submitted, and it's one, one by the redistricting master to the committee, and then the committee shall adopt the map. So, that's really clear in the charter. So that's why I'm shaking my head, because that's not what the charter says.
I wasn't stating what the charter says. What I was stating is what the redistricting committee did, and the maps that we have seen since the redistricting committee was at an impasse. So, with that said, would you all like to see map C that the, that the master put forward? Yes, so Paul, I think, I, I wouldn't mind seeing it again. Do we have a majority that would like to see that map? I see, Gary said yes, I said yes, and so, nobody wants to see it?
Chair?
Counselor Lance?
Yeah, I just want to say that I think it's premature and unproductive for this council to be looking at, whether it's map C, or A2, or B2, because, once again, the redistricting committee process was corrupted from the beginning, and unfortunately, because no single map was submitted from the redistricting master, it went off the rails at that point. And I think that a much wiser decision for the council to make as a whole would be to go back, and whether it's reform the redistricting committee and ask them to do their work according to the charter, or to ask the redistricting master to submit one map, as should have been done according to the charter in the first place.
Well, Madam Chair, may I? That's a great thought. I wish we had talked about it with the lawyers ahead of time over the last two months. We never were provided that option of the process with the legal advice we were getting from the PA. And we, obviously, you can't talk about what we talked about in executive session. We just came out of one. So, do we need to go back into executive session and find out if that's a possibility? Or, now what do we do, Leslie?
That is a possibility that the council can entertain, yes.
Madam Chair?
Counselor Bauer?
I, I think that that would have been a great idea, however, given the timeframe that has been imposed on us at this point in time, I think it's not a realistic alternative for us to pursue. And consequently, if it would be helpful to have a motion and therefore have us have something to talk about, I'd be delighted to make such a motion.
Why don't you make a motion, Counselor Bauer, and let's see what we get?
I move that alternative C be moved to hearing, public hearing, on February 1st.
I second that motion. Further discussion?
Madam Chair? Um, yeah, just that this process is completely outside. We'll find out, clearly, everybody knows the lawsuit's been filed. We'll find out from a court here quickly. To continue going forward, I also think is premature and irresponsible, given that the process has been messed up from the committee perspective. The charter is very clear on how this process is supposed to work, and for us to continue to go forward in this manner, I find to be just appalling, frankly.
Further discussion?
Chair?
Counselor Lance?
Yeah, I, I also, I formally object to the way this is moving. I think that this council should take this seriously, and while I understand the concerns about time, and there are some real concerns, there's a greater concern, which is that we get this right. This is the first time that this process is occurring in Clark County. After the charter, after this process was put into the charter, this is the first time. And it's been a mess from the very, very beginning, from when the chair first interfered in the selection of members of, of the, of the redistricting committee, to the bad advice that was given.
Excuse me, I am going to, you stop. You are not going to disparage any member of this council by naming them and saying that they did the wrong thing. Keep your comments very vanilla, please. I will not accept the kind of besmirching that's happening at this moment.
Madam Chair- I'm sorry, Chair, that you feel that stating an actual fact is besmirching. But if the acts hadn't occurred, then besmirching wouldn't occur either. So I'm going to move forward here. So after that first, after that first moment, Chair, please. In the order, in the, I'm not out of order, I'm speaking.
Yes, you're out of order.
No, I'm not.
You're finished, you're finished.
I'm going to, so Chair, so Chair, you are refusing-
Madam Chair, let her finish.
Yeah, let me finish.
Comments?
I will only let her finish if she's continuing, if she eliminates accusatory things to anybody on this council.
Well, again, statement of fact is not an accusation, but I'll move forward, I've already said it. So, from that point at which that occurred, then moving forward to when more than one map was submitted from the redistricting master, and that was a violation of the charter and should have been stopped there. And now, with the council continuing to move forward despite the fact of a lawsuit that is about this exact issue, I formally object to moving forward in this manner. And it is on us to get this right. The voters approve the charter, and we need to follow the will of the voters, and we need to get this right so that it can move forward. It's been a mess from the beginning, we have the opportunity to fix it, and I think it would make a lot more sense to do it here than in a court of law.
Other discussion about the motion on the floor?
I'm just also formally object to the process.
Counselor Mandigie, Counselor Olson, you don't have the floor. Counselor Mandigie?
Thank you. So, I just want to highlight for people that are listening, some of this highlights two huge strategic issues. One, the charter is devoid of a lot of good what-ifs. And pretty much the charter, redistricting committee, we saw right away that, oh my gosh, they're gonna, they're not going to come up with a result, and there's no real process to break ties, even in selecting the master, that could have been a tie. And so, it goes to the charter. The second highlight is that, you know, we're getting advice from a lawyer's office, the PA's office. The PA doesn't exclusively represent the county council, nor do they seem to believe they have a role in representing the voters in bringing lawsuits themselves. They represent the auditor's office, they represented the charter review committee and the subcommittee and our appointed committee. They represented all entities during this process. And not until this moment have we just heard that it's a possible, possibility to send it back to the redistricting to get a single map. And if you recall my comments last session, I said, if, if I had this as a judge, and this was my jury, I would have sent them back to further deliberate. Having said all that, I don't know, because of the way the charter set up this committee, and we followed the law as it was explained to us by the PA's office every step of the way. I don't see any reasonable likelihood there will be a different result, unless we could direct them to look at C or different alternatives beyond that which they were evidently stuck on. I don't know how much work they actually did on C. I know they did some work on it, and that came from the master himself, who's probably the most expert in this process. So quite frankly, again, if, if the PA's office is confident we could send this back to them, and additionally, if we could guide them or direct them to look at other alternatives as well as C, I would intend to do that, because I agree with Counselor Lance. We want to get this right, and this is already heading downhill fast. This should have gone before the court, right after the election, and we had no lawyer to represent us to take it there. So now we're responding to the subcommittee's own lawsuit. This is a ridiculous situation, and it really derives from the fact that we had no legal advice coming directly to us on our behalf or the voters of this county.
So Counselor Mandigie, I just want to, just want to clarify, you agree with Counselor Lance on what? Please, not everything she said, I hope?
No, I, the editorializing whether she thinks it's based on facts or not is something I disparage. I believe we could work a lot more productively and collegially together without disparaging actions that are taken with the PA's advice. So, if we can go back and quickly get the committee that we put together under the charter to come up with one map, that's what I would like to do. So, if we can do that, that's where my vote would lie. I think we should pursue that.
Madam Chair?
Right now, we have a, a motion on the floor, however, to proceed to a hearing on February 1st and discuss map C.
Okay, one more comment before we go to vote. I also would agree with Counselor Mandigie and Counselor Lance that if we could get this back to the redistricting committee and get back to the process and get this right, I think that would be in all of our best interests.
Okay, so there is a motion on the floor to move the hearing to February 1st on the map C. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, motion fails.
Chair, if I may?
Counselor, um, excuse me, Leslie?
Thank you. I know that several things have been discussed, perhaps a quick executive session in the middle here to discuss what has just been brought up might be pertinent. And it would be regarding pending litigation.
Okay.
I agree with that. Madam Chair, if I may, because it needs to be said, not to discuss what we discussed in executive session, but we need to hear from our own lawyer as to this process on behalf of the council and on behalf of the voters of Clark County. So, you know, have, if we do send it back to the redistricting committee, it's still going to be in the context that there's a pending lawsuit, and we're going to receive our own individual lawyer, albeit appointed by the very lawyer that's conflicted in representing us, which is a really bizarre situation. Nevertheless, it is what it is. I do agree we should go back into executive session.
Okay, Leslie, how many minutes do you suppose we'll need for this pending litigation discussion?
I only need five minutes, but I don't know how long the rest-
I think we better have 15 minutes.
So- For Chair, if I may, just for process, if we could have an amendment to the agenda to add a second executive session, just to ensure we've got that process followed.
Without objection, I move that we amend the agenda to have a second executive session for 15 minutes. Our legal counsel will be present for having the potential litigation allowed by RCW 4230-1110-1101I. And that will be for 15 minutes. We will return to, to this work session at 11:58. Is it 11:50?
Twenty, twenty-three.
Twenty-three, sorry. Okay, let's head to executive session, thank you. Out of, out of executive session, I have a question at this point for Paul Newman, who was the individual who submitted map C. And I'm wondering, Paul, if you can tell me, at what point in the discussions of the committee did your map come into play? Or when was that map submitted? Was that the first thing submitted and they began working from that point, or?
No, really, first of all, thank you for the question. Really, three alternatives were submitted nearly together, you know, within, pretty much within one meeting. What is known as alternative A, B, and C. Alternative A was submitted by Kamal, one of the redistricting committee members. And I was asked to create two additional alternatives, what was called B and C. And they were, alternative B was guided by what was on the ballot, an intention to have it as close as possible to what was on the ballot, or in the voter's guide. And C was somewhat of a hybrid between what was on the ballot and what Kamal had submitted. I also, I mentioned earlier that a goal of C was to get all of east, east side of Vancouver in, to a single district there east of 205. And also to follow some natural boundaries, such as Lackamas Creek. And, so does that answer your question?
It does, although I have a follow-up question on that. Who asked for alternative B? Is it, was that just created by the, the discussion that went on there?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. That does answer my question. Okay, counselors, I, I guess I'd open up for further discussion about what we were going to do at this juncture.
Madam Chair?
Counselor Olson?
Yeah, I would move that we send this redistricting map question back to the redistricting committee to come back to us with a single map, or at least get to work on coming back to us with a single map.
Second?
It's been moved in second that we send this task back to the redistricting committee, and they come up with a single map. Is there further discussion?
Madam Chair?
Counselor Olson?
Thank you. Yeah, I think, as stated earlier, we need to get this right. I think if we can get this back to the redistricting committee, I think just in this conversation this morning, that we're talking, and how these three maps that we're considering even came to fruition, if we just go back to the charter language, if the committee goes back to the charter language, we can get maybe a better start. This is important for our community, it's important for our voters, it's important for us. And I think we know there's a lawsuit pending, they can get back to work. Depending on the timeline, I know we want to get things done judiciously, but we, I think it's more important that we get them done correctly. If the judge makes a ruling on anything, it will, they're, while they are working, then they can be guided in that way as well. So, I just think, given where we are right now, this is our best option going forward, to get something done in its best form.
Other discussion?
Madam Chair?
Counselor-
Unfortunately, I'll be voting against this motion for two reasons, at least. One is any lack of date in terms of guidance to the redistricting committee. And number two is there is no membership, as I understand it, on the redistricting committee. So how that is to be handled is yet another question that is not dealt with in the motion.
Further discussion?
Madam Chair, if I may?
Mandigie?
Thank you. There is no good way to go forward, absolutely none. And it's, again, because the charter is so devoid of details as to how the committee should have proceeded, and how they got their advice, whether they took their advice, whether the result that they gave to the council. I think from, during every step, we have followed the law as it was explained to us by the PA's office. Additionally, we don't know, now that that committee is gone, they've basically dissolved, whether they'll take the issue back. We'll find that out soon, if, if we do send it back to them. And we obviously can't go back to the respective parties and start from scratch, soliciting nominations and to submit a brand-new committee. The auditor will pull his hair out if he knows we start all over again. He's probably already pulling his hair out with the tight timeline that we have that candidates in the future will depend on to get this resolved. So, there's no good way forward. It isn't, it's before the court, and certainly the court can reject it and say they don't want to hear the issue, but it is before the court, and perhaps the court will be dealing directly and giving guidance to the redistricting committee. Ultimately, that's where my thoughts lie. We want to get it right, we want to do it right. We are in uncharted territory, there is no case law. There's a difference of opinion as to what the charter means. On behalf of the lawyers, we received multiple maps from the redistricting committee. And so, the best way forward is to send it back. The court's involved, hopefully they'll make some, they'll give clarity to the charter and give direction to the redistricting committee. We should have brought suit on behalf of the voters after the ballot measure came back. And that didn't happen, because there was no lawyer out there representing the voters. So, in any case, I do support that motion, I will vote for it.
I, I will not be supporting the motion, and for the reasons stated also by Counselor Bauerman, it's too late to get a new committee. We don't know if that committee will have the time to put into this redistricting. I believe we already have maps to work with and can do it fairly expeditiously. I think it's up to us now, according to what the charter does say, or the instructions that we have had, as, according to what the process is, once a redistricting committee cannot decide. So, that, that would be my reason. I, I think we have a, we have a council right here that can deal with it and should deal with it, so that, so that our elections can be clean and go forward with, by May, people will know where their district is. So, I see Greg would like to speak, this is, we're discussing a motion. So, I'm, I'm not sure if it's proper to, to have somebody else speak. I don't know, Leslie, could I do that?
I mean, typically, the motions are discussed by the council, so-
Right. Yeah. So that, yeah, the voting members then really are part of the discussion, Greg. I'll take your comments after we complete the vote, or is there further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Greg?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I guess I did, I did want to express our appreciation for the continued commitment to use existing precinct boundaries, those boundaries as adjusted, as, as they need, as they will need to be adjusted by what the state committee has done. But, so, thank you for that continued interest in doing that. And of course, thank you for your interest in getting this done in time for the, on the election calendar. And then, as the former chair of the county redistricting committee, I also, I'm, wanted to offer up, I don't see, under the existing guidance from, from legal counsel, I don't see where the county redistricting committee would come to a different conclusion than it had previously come to, so.
I'm wondering, Madam Chair, if I may?
Counselor Mandigie?
Once we get outside council involved, maybe the committee could seek that advice as well, instead of the advice they've been getting from the council that threw them into this quandary.
Other comments?
Chair?
Counselor Lance?
Yeah, Greg, I think that's actually a very fair point, as far as where the redistricting committee is going to get to. And though I, and I am in this moment not acting as legal counsel by any means, but some of the discussion that, that we've had, you know, in these public sessions has been that, you know, one map, it's, it's that coming up with one map to begin with, to have the redistricting master submit one map based on the desires of the committee as represented to them, as opposed to that direction that multiple maps are okay. I know that doesn't necessarily make the conversation any easier to come to agreement, but that's, you know, that's the point that we've identified as the, the moment that it, that it, that it moved outside of the charter. And so that's what we'd like to reset back to and see if we can, we can get one map moving forward that is then amended, ideally. Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I make one additional point with-
Yes.
Specifically to Greg. So I'm hoping, and this is what I would say to my jurors, if you were my juror, will you commit yourself to get the committee back together and restart afresh? Look at other maps, provide us with one map, and come back as best you can, give it your best efforts to provide one map for us to move forward. to provide one map for us to move forward with.
Well, Counselor Mandigie, I'm always willing to commit to use my best efforts. The, the challenge, of course, is the language in the charter puts the obligation on the redistricting master to submit a single map. And as I've said before, when the redistricting master has submitted more than one map, that's, as Counselor Lance said, that is where this, this conundrum arrives from. So I, with the requirement of four votes to accept a map that's been submitted by the master, again, I, again, I don't see where the outcome of this reformulated committee would be any different than was previously. And so again, I'm not, and I'm not a legal, I'm not providing legal, I'm not attorney. I don't provide legal advice. But I don't know where the authority to recreate the redistricting committee comes from as well. So I,
That's right.
That's not provided for in the charter, but I guess you could do that. I don't know. So.
Exactly, yeah.
Existing precinct boundaries, existing precinct boundaries. Thank you.
Okay, the other thing that I would say is, you know, we're sending this back to a committee, a person from which has filed suit. I think that's really kind of a ridiculous place to send it, in my view. So that's what the council wants. So you, I guess that's what we will do, and we'll see what happens. Unfortunately, I feel for the individuals who might want to run for office who have no idea what district they will be in, in order to run. So I think this is really pretty much a kerfuffle.
You know, I, I.
Sir Bowerman?
I just have one more comment about the role of the master. We understand and have read that the master is to submit one copy of the map or one map. However, when requested by the committee to contribute another map and another map, what is he to do? Not respond? I, I'm, I think that is a most, more than an awkward situation. It's one for which there has not been a clear answer given, and his responsiveness is perfectly understandable. His responsiveness.
I agree. Yeah, I agree with Counselor Bowerman on this. You know, what's he to do? If there's a map and they want to amend it, he has to submit that map. That becomes a different map. So, you know, what is he to do? I just, I don't understand how this is going to come to any fruitful end myself. So we're just, we're just throwing this to the wind in some senses and allowing that the clock to continue ticking and not being our friend. So.
Chair?
Counselor Lance?
Yes, what, what the redistricting master is to do is to submit one map. Words have meanings, and an amended map is different from a submitted map. An amended map is not a new map in the sense of the three maps that were presented to the committee as alternatives. Those were three different maps, and one should have been submitted to the committee, and then amendments made from there. That's not the process that occurred, and that's what, by sending it back to the redistricting committee, we are asking to have happen.
Yeah, the plate, the canvas is Clark County and the precincts therein. So, you know, all three maps included all of those things. They just had different district lines.
And there should have been only one.
I, Paul, I can just say, I really feel for you. Thank you for taking on this task, and God be with you as we go forward.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? If not, I will adjourn this session.
So Counselor.
Counselor. Greg.
Sorry, I guess I have a question. So the redistricting, the county redistricting committee dissolved at the end, at the end of December. So I guess I just bring that to your attention. And so the process of reforming that committee is, it's not clear to me how that would happen. So, but using existing precinct boundaries, that's really good idea. Thank you.
You've been on the entire meeting, Greg, have you not? Because we were told that we could reappoint the existing committee and send it back. So that's what we were told. So we're going to try to do that, and hopefully, everybody will start afresh with an open wine with one map. Let's get it done.
And possibly we'll have another lawsuit from somebody who says you can't do that. And, you know, so what fun.
As Counselor Mandigie said, it's in front of the court. Maybe by the time this, we get the redistricting committee considering getting back together, that we have a court ruling, and we can go from there.
Yeah, well, it's always, always hopeful. Okay. If there's no further discussion, we'll adjourn.